...Wednesday, November 14th. We have Ted, Sarah, Barbara, and myself, so we have a quorum. And Susan and our planner, Max, and Bill is here. So we will get started. Any adjustments to the agenda? Any citizens' comments apart from the application we're discussing tonight? I don't see any other citizens besides those guys. So move on to the minutes. We have the minutes from the meetings of September 12th and October 10th. Did everyone get a chance to look through those since the last meeting? I have, and they were fine. Where are my copies?
Are we discussing both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
As you wish.
On October 10th. I can't believe I had that many emphatic comments. Apparently I did.
I surprise myself often in that way.
All to come to fruition at this meeting, which is not going to happen. Because I just read them an hour ago.
Okay.
Anyway, so I would just like to say, instead of saying for -- sorry.
Where are you? Yeah.
Number four.
Yeah.
Boardman had three comments. Da-da-da-da. She called for discussion at the next planning board meeting. Or how about if -- I'd like to cross that out and say at upcoming planning board meetings, giving us an option about when we are going to tackle those subjects.
I'm not sure I see where you are, Barbara.
Uh, October 10th.
Page two.
Page four. Yeah, number four, comments for the planning board.
Page three.
Page three, number four, okay.
Yeah.
Boardman had three comments. Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so down below, last sentence, call for discussion at the next planning board meeting. Let's just put at upcoming planning board meetings. Because I can't believe I was that ambitious.
Okay.
Should that be this case for the previous sentence as well? Because I don't think we're going to be doing the Shoreland.
Sure.
Article seven as well.
Yeah. So again, up above, the second sentence, call for discussion.
So strike the next.
At future planning board meetings.
Strike the words "the next."
Yep.
And put in upcoming.
Future planning board meetings, plural.
Yep.
Okay. Two changes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Phew, that takes some pressure.
Okay, good. I had no changes to either sets of minutes.
I believe they'd be approved as written.
I second the motion.
Approved as subject to Barbara.
As amended. A second?
Carry it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay.
When one's approved, it's distributed. That's September 12th. The other is October 10th. It's amended.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, under new business, we have a application for 3200 Atlantic Highway parking year expansion. Sir?
Yes? My name's Michael Sabatini. I'm a civil engineer with Landmark Corporation, surveyors and engineers. Here on behalf of Jeff Pason and Northeast Transport to talk to you about site plan application. The applicability, why we're here, is because of expanding gravel and paved yard in his business. And that's what brought us in for site plan review. I'd like to kind of go over the application and then talk about the plan a little bit. So the application, first of all, we kind of, before we did this site plan application, it was a site law application, as he was the founder. And we noted that a lot of the requirements in your site plan ordinance, similar requirements were in the site plan. So we kind of took things from that. We amended things as necessary. So that's the way the kind of submittal is organized. I'll just go over that with you a little bit. We have the permit application in here. We went through the part of the ordinance that has what's supposed to be on the site plan. And you'll notice that in the table of contents, there's the section numbers. Those section numbers refer to the section numbers in the site law application. There are some missing, and you might be curious about that. But we just wanted to point to those headings so that you could find the information that's required by the site plan review. There are some, as we went down through the requirements of the plan, there were some waivers that we're requesting. And there is an additional waivers requested sheet in the application, right here, in the semil package. I can go over them briefly, and we can go over there in more detail after I present this, I guess. But they include the map scale. Basically, the map is already prepared. It doesn't quite meet the scale you required. You would ask to show the location of the nearest fire hydrant, and the plan just doesn't go out far enough to show that. You'd asked about site distances for the driveways. And it's a longstanding driveway that was approved by DOT. The site distances are fine. We didn't go back out and remeasure them, so. Landscaping plan, again, it's a longstanding, developed site with nice landscaping out in the front, and everyone knows that it's a well-kept site. So we didn't provide a landscaping plan. So those are kind of the items that we saw for the plan requirements. We also, in the application, thought it was worthwhile to go through the performance standards. And it's after the table of contents, there's a list, performance standards, applicability. And we clicked down through all your performance standards and kind of pointed to you what sections they were in. And hopefully that was helpful for you, just because we didn't want you to be all over the place. And as I go down through this list, there are certain of them that we felt were just not applicable, like construction standards for buildings. There's no buildings being proposed. This is just expansion of gravel area and paved area. There's a section on historic village district architectural standard, obviously not applicable. So there are some that we thought were not applicable. There were some that we requested a waiver. For instance, you asked for a calculation of net develop acreage. And it was, we were going to have to go through quite a bit of work to do that, and it was just, if you look at the basic numbers, it's just not worth going through that exercise, you know? It was just, there's plenty of land beyond where this development is. So it just didn't seem to make sense.
Excuse me, but in one sense, didn't you sort of do that? You just said that the development covers a max of 4.5.
Right.
So you're well below, even if all of it was, of your acreage was developed, so you've demonstrated that you're under the limit.
Way under, basically, yeah.
Yeah, so in a sense, you've accomplished.
Yeah, I guess so. I guess so. So maybe a waiver's not requested, but it's just, we mean it, yes.
How much land does Jeff have available?
That's the total acres. 15 acres, yeah.
Next, and easily.
Yeah.
Good.
So, as I said, there's several items. I can, as you go through this and as you go through your review process, I'm happy to talk about each individual one of them. But I just wanted to go tell you that I did do that, and hopefully that, you found that helpful in the application. Also wanted to point out that I'm doing this in collaboration with Randy Scamper. Randy Scamper is another engineer who prepared the plan, and I helped him pull this together and in presenting tonight. So let me go over the site plan a little bit, and just so everyone can understand the Everyone's familiar with where this site is, Route 1. And this light gray beige color in the darker buildings, that's kind of what has been there for a while. Some of it was built in 1988, Jeff, the original building. There was an expansion in 2014, a front yard expansion where there's trailer parking. And then back here, and we actually built the shop.
The shop was built at the same time as the expansion up front.
Yeah, okay.
And the piece behind it, so that we can drive trucks around the back, ride through the background.
Right. So what we're here for tonight, there's two other expansion areas. In the rear, here, there's about 1.37 acres of gravel parking in the rear. And then there's a little bit of a paved parking out towards the front. Can you see that?
I can. One little thought. If you had a fire, what would you have available for water?
I believe that there's a, what do you call it, a dry hydrant.
Yes.
It's just down at the base of the hill beyond, I don't know who lives up in there now, but the old Paul Springer house.
Okay.
I believe there's a dry hydrant down there.
You have drilled well?
We have drilled well.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will say, when we did have that fire two years ago, the fire department here responded wonderfully. And it took me 20 minutes to get there, and they already had the big swimming pool thing there.
Great.
Filling it, the mutual aid.
Great.
We have a fire department. We can be really proud of here.
Appreciate the vote of confidence.
I expressed that to Chief Smeltzer as well.
Good, excellent.
Great job.
So the total acres is 1.54 acres of new furthest area between the two areas. There is some proposed lighting on poles in the back. I don't believe we're proposing it in front. There is an existing septic system right here. There are no new employees being brought on because of this expansion, so the septic system's fine. There's no need to expand that. The existing well is right here, behind this kind of central office. And it's fine, too, in quality and quantity. No problems there. Kind of the reason for this expansion, Jeff, it was explained to me, there's been some rules changes with the trucking industry, and he just basically has to have more trailers for the same amount of drivers. It's got to do with drive times, and as he described to me, it's a trailer pool that he has to increase.
It's relative to driver time? Because I was curious as to what the exact, the law change was that sort of means you have to have more trailers there.
It was the electronic logs mandate that they had.
Yeah.
That came fully implemented last December.
Okay.
And to maximize driver performance now, we have to stage trailers at shippers' locations so the driver doesn't go in and sit and wait for two hours or so while they're loading.
Okay.
You show up, drop an empty trailer, pick up a loaded trailer.
Okay.
Do your inspection and leave.
Okay.
So it's all about efficiency and motion.
How big an area do you cover?
We dwell 48 states.
Oh, my.
Canadian provinces that touches our border, plus Prince Edward Island.
Fair area.
Northeast is, we've kind of outgrown that name, I think. But yeah, it's still our primary locations. Here to Wisconsin and Virginia in the Maritimes is central, but we go everywhere.
And some of your trucks are refrigerated?
Our vast majority of trucks are refrigerated. We have some dry bins that we use for special customers. However, our focus of business is expedited, refrigerated, high value. Think lobster meat.
Exactly. Yes.
Frozen blueberries. Okay, think frozen blueberries.
One last topic, I guess, stormwater management. It's a big part of what's going to, the site law application with DEP. We're proposing a wooded buffer on the down gradient side of the improvements, which will treat not only the proposed improvements, but the existing improvements as well. There's a uniquely effective buffer. We, I don't know if you saw in here, there's a letter from the state soil scientist that was gushing about this, the duff layer, the microtopography, the infiltration that happens. It's just, it's like a textbook buffer. And so we're going to utilize that, and she flow a lot of the stormwater directly into the buffer, and anything that's concentrated, get it into a level spreader and spread it back out and discharge the buffer. And so we're working through that with DEP. And we submitted that same information with this application, so.
Yep. What's the distance between your operation and the SAB 40? High school.
And the high school?
Yeah.
As the crow flies, I'd have to guess at a half a mile.
Out through the bushes, yeah. There've been numerous conversations on how to put together sewage and water and so on at the high school, and it never has really come together well. Looks like you're covered, but the school is still a little bit iffy with some of their needs.
I could recommend a really good engineer.
You're enough. Good.
Yep. So I'm done. I'm happy to answer any questions or dive into some of the specifics of any of the not applicable waivers requests.
Barbara?
The design of the rear lot's kind of funny in the way the, so I'm just kind of curious. You've got all the trailers all lined up here, but then you've got kind of an extra area pushed back on the upper right-hand corner of the lot. And so I'm kind of wondering about that. But also, I mean, it looks like you've got the trailer turn around here, kind of mapped out for how you'd get things into different places. But I guess my main concern is building right up to the property line. Doing a hard surface right up to the property line. And I wasn't aware that that was permitted in commercial.
Well, there's a building setback. You know, are you saying that there's a setback for paved?
I thought that parking, in lot design and parking, if we call this a type of parking, I thought that those kinds of things were in our ordinance. There's visual impacts, of course, but not that that's a huge issue here. Setback, it's at least eight feet from the side or the rear lot line is in one section of the ordinance. I just think it's, with so much property, and obviously you've got wet areas and runoff and drainage and all that kind of stuff, but with so much property and the funny little shape, so I guess I was wondering, can you stack them front to back and, you know, pull a little bit off your, right off your neighbor's side there?
I know, I'm just speaking to Jeff, and he can weigh in, but I bet you that he'd say the more gravel, the better, and the more flexibility to move things around and store things. Can maybe store things doubled up and do that.
My intention there is that the snow.
Okay.
Any gravel or whatever would be retrievable.
Yeah.
Be the right word.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what that's for.
The snow storage area, yeah. And, you know, there's others, there is another spot here where it's paved right up to the property line. You know, there is, it's not quite shown here, but there's some grading that has to be done, and there's a boulder wall that's called out there, so there will be a little bit of a setback there. It isn't quite shown on the site plan. See that says retaining wall needed?
Yeah, it's here on this other diagram. You can see it.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be a little bit of a boulder wall there that will have to be battered, so it won't be exactly right up to the property line. It'll probably start a couple feet from the property line and taper another couple, three feet toward the parking.
Jeff? I presume that your neighbors are well acquainted with what you're doing.
And I talked to Millard about this back when we started.
Excellent.
And he said, whatever he needs to.
Just, good neighbors, glad to hear it.
Yeah, small town.
Exactly.
So Millard's fine.
Good.
I told him what the concept was.
Thank you.
Yep.
So one question I had relative to that boundary line was this cutout for the septic field. Is that a grandfathered cutout, or how did that?
Yeah. There was a problem with the original surveying of it, and I don't want to name names of surveyors.
Okay.
But very thick up through there, and it was difficult to measure. This is the days before GPS. They'd take a pole, hold it up in the air, and they'd drag it through really thick brush. They got the line in the wrong spot. When we came back and we sighted the lines with today's technology, we found out that the edge of the septic system had gotten over onto the neighbor's side, and our original garage building impeded onto, what do you call it, the side setback. So we talked to Millard, and he sold us whatever size that little piece is there.
Okay.
It's, I don't care, but future owners of yours or mine might, so let's resold it while we're able. Great.
Just a quick thing, because you mentioned parking and being up to the border. From what I have at 4-9, for setbacks, all parking spaces and access drives shall have at least eight feet from any side or rear lot line, except for the additional requirements in buffer yards.
Okay.
Move back eight feet?
Move back eight feet. I mean, if that could be a condition, you know, that you guys consider, and we could submit a plan to the planner, perhaps something like that?
We'll add that to the list here, and we can consider that at the end, how we want to handle it. So the, this retaining wall, you said as needed, so what defines, what will define the needed? How will you know whether you're going to need that retaining wall or not?
Well, definitely, it will be needed.
Okay, so, okay.
I mean, the length is as needed.
Yeah. Millard had said, we wanted to go over on his side and take some of that snow off.
Oh, okay.
He wouldn't have a problem.
There's your as-needed reason right there.
He'd say, if you need.
Grate on, grate on to his property to not need a retaining wall.
Okay, because it's, okay, because that's going uphill to your right, so you're just trying to keep his property from flowing back in. But if you take it in the first place, it won't be, okay.
He said it'd be okay.
Okay.
But we'll see what it looks like when we actually get out there. What is it called? Chilling, the chilling grades.
Yeah.
And the proposed grade right there.
Plenipotentiary property, probably increasing his value to a favor for the value of his property.
Yep. The parking lot will be around 106, and there's a 112 right there. So there's a six-foot difference, which would require the retaining wall, which you could do with boulders or whatever. But if that's the case, and you can grate back on the butter's property, you can lay that back and.
Off and over the bulldozer.
Yeah, right.
We also found, when we've done the other expansion, we found a lot of boulders, you know, there. The concept would be to use those, so it'd be locally obtained, readily available material.
Locally sourced.
If I'm reading this correctly, that buffer zone on the left there in the green, the drainage that's feeding that actually comes from the Miller side as well. In other words, all of that, you're actually draining a wider area than what's.
There's some off-site area like that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Not a lot, because it does come up to a high point, and then some of it goes back this way.
Okay.
But there is some.
Okay.
And there's some here as well, that drains this way into a ditch, and we'll put it to a level spreader.
How far do you have to go on Route 1 before you have a cross-the-road drainage ditch culvert?
It's very close. It's just right down here. There's kind of a little, there's a little brook right here.
Yeah.
And when it comes down and across the.
Side of the road is damp in some spots, for sure.
In the front along Route 1 is the riprap. Is that below grade, or is that just kind of framing the edge of the new pavement? I mean, is that a visual thing, or kind of?
Yeah, so the grade drops down there, you know? And so you level, level the paved area, and it would be that slope of that, so it'd be a fill slope.
It gets captured in the riprap, but then it's heading towards the wetland. Where does the wet go to from that new parking area? There's no arrows, well, there's arrows, but once it's in the soil, where's it going?
So that riprap that you're seeing is just what he's showing as erosion control mix. It might not even be riprap, but actually it's, he calls out either wood chip or erosion control mulch mix, or, yeah, it could be riprap. He is calling riprap there, I'm sorry. But that's just armoring the slope from erosion.
Okay.
There was a level spreader proposed in that location, but it would be this ditch coming around there, and it'd be in front of this, so that it spreads back out and goes into this buffer.
So it goes up, so it really becomes something that you see from Route 1, kind of almost like a wall. It's going up in grade.
It would be something similar to the other side, only this one would be more of an fill slope. Yeah.
Tremendous runoff behind the garden shop.
Other side of the road.
Other side of the road, big runoff.
Yeah.
And I presume this culvert fits into their drainage control also.
Yeah, this, this is a tributary, I forget the names of the brooks downstream from this, but there's a couple brooks that go into these portals, you know? But yeah, it's all going to that same spot, yeah.
And fits in smoothly.
So you've got the property line in the back. I'm just kind of curious, 15 acres overall, but I'm curious that you kept that property line in the plans. Yeah, and it's.
That was where the original property, you bought more land right to the rear.
I bought another 4.7 acres from Paul Springer after we bought this initial. And that's the original property line. There's another, I don't know what you call it. Castle. I think it's 4.7 acres.
So you're saying that this initial property is like 10 acres?
Correct.
And then there's more, okay, so the 15 overall is a small piece in the back, okay.
Right, we bought all the way to the CMP right away.
Good. Good.
Paul wanted to sell it, so.
Timing was right. The timing was right.
Yeah. I mean, if there's a wetlands behind where we want to go now, if we ever wanted to go out there, we, I don't know if we'd ever be able to. So it's not my intention to go back there. This is down 1630. This is my, this is my thoughts.
Yeah.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Somewhere in this package, very impressive package, it has this site map, and the only information has, and then it has the lot on it, and it says something to the effect of, I'm just curious how you find out something like this. It says, no aquifers around in the area.
That's a.
Is that a state thing?
It's a statewide aquifer map. And that's a site law requirement, that we have to get that map, show where the site is on it, and see if there's any mapped aquifers. They, when, for site law review, they are concerned for if there's any impacts to groundwater, whether it be a large septic system, or, which this is not, this is just office use. If the lowest ground used, you could have any hazardous materials, so forth, stuff like that.
So if there were, just curious, just for education, if there was an aquifer, would it change anything?
It would raise the, it would raise the concern and, you know, about looking at, you know, impacts to groundwater.
Okay.
So that's the purpose behind it, yeah.
Go well aware of north and south pond and the looking between and so on.
Yeah, is it a special significance?
It's very large in the area, and that would be magnificently significant if anything serious happened.
Yeah, well, this doesn't drain to that.
I think it might. When you get out behind the garden shop, that definitely drains into that tributary I'm talking about.
It's strange, I have a map, let me find this. It doesn't drain to north and south, it drains to Demuth Brook.
That's it.
Hmm.
The connection between the two.
And Demuth drains to, hold on one second.
What was the other thing draining there, same way? I think that's where the, the storage facility on the Warren-Waldaborough border opposite the entrance to this high school, I think. the entrance to this high school, I think that drains into Demuth too, doesn't it?
So this, I have a narrative that.
Yeah, I think that's the same drainage.
The high site drains to an unnamed tributary of Demuth Brook, which, so this goes across Route One and drains to Demuth Brook, which is a tributary of Slago Brook, which drains to Sampson Cove.
Oh, Sampson Cove, that's interesting.
On the domic, yeah, the tidal portion, so it doesn't go to any ponds, it goes brook to brook to brook.
I thought it had the connection between the two ponds.
Yeah, that's what it was. So sort of obliquely along those lines, I was just curious, I just want to make sure I understand this, and you have the letter to the inland fisheries and wildlife.
Yep.
And they, they said they didn't see any essential habitats or fisheries directed, but they, they did recommend that you contact main fish and wildlife relative to bats, and then there was a thing about vernal pools.
Right.
Now, is that covered in this other, you then have this letter from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry, is that what that was, or is it, did you, they just recommended, they weren't requiring?
They just recommended, so the bat, there's a, there's a endangered, or I don't know, there's possibly endangered species, they're on the verge of these bats.
Yeah.
And it's, when you impact wetlands, and it's forested wetlands in particular, which we're not doing as part of this project.
Yeah.
You know, you are potentially affecting their habitat.
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't have to, because we're not impacting any wetlands, we weren't under their jurisdiction.
Okay.
So I didn't think we had to worry about that so much. I mean, we could contact them if you want us to, but, and the other one was vernal pools, which the soil scientists have been out there, we've had our own soil scientist out there recently doing some more work, there are no vernal pools in the vicinity.
Good deal.
So that's not a problem, but, and then the bat thing, it was my impression, it was only when you were impacting forested wetlands that that brought into concern, so.
So I think the sentence here was, our department will, so IFNW, our department will need to review and verify any vernal pool data prior to final determination of significance, so does that mean that in addition to DEP stormwater, this application has to go back to IFNW for the vernal pool?
Yeah, it's in front of them now.
Okay.
Like, I send the initial, you know, this is about where the project is, can you tell us anything, and then that goes in with the initial site law, and then, once this is in, it goes out to all the departments, and they will make a final determination on that.
So if we were, so that would be an item to capture, I'm trying to capture the pending things, and so there would be DEP approval?
Yes.
And so how would we, how would we characterize this approval, ISMW?
Well, that IFNW, it's inland fisheries and wildlife.
Yeah.
It's inherent in this, in the DEP approval.
It's part of the synergy.
It is, so it's all part of the DEP, so if we just say DEP approval, it'll cover all that, okay.
It captures everything, it's a very comprehensive.
Yeah, okay.
It's the highest review that you can do for DEP.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're capturing it properly.
Jeff, what side of a breeding area is close by mosquitoes?
That's your question?
You haven't had any difficulties?
No.
I was thinking about attracting bats, that's all. Thank you.
Oh.
Very good, no problem.
I could use more of them, that's what. I'm not sure how to answer this question, so maybe Bill you could help, or Ted or someone could help us, help me. You made some improvements, some additions of coverage in 2014, which were, didn't come to the level of requiring approval, and now we're adding more. Because that was only four years ago, it's within a five-year, I thought there was a five-year limit for most things, are we technically approving the 2014 as part of the, this, or just, are we approving the whole package, or?
Yeah.
It could be, yeah, I mean, if that's the case, we can capture it all, and you're looking at.
Well, it's all there, I just, yeah, okay.
It's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, it is in all things.
Okay. I don't want, if anybody, I don't want to take all the questions, I have a couple more items. The, the soil guy that came in and looked at your, at, you know, the green stripe, your buffer area, suggested that you periodically cut like the very tallest trees, so that they don't go over and rip up your buffer.
Right, yeah, for blowdown.
Yeah, and you've got a, at one point here, I know you have a, a maintenance sort of monitoring log of the stuff that you.
The boilerplate buffer, yeah.
And, yeah, and so there was a check here, and for the forested buffer, we were checking annually, but wouldn't it behoove you to add something to, as part of that, to specifically look for tall trees that would be worth culling?
Sure.
Because, you know, the, again, he was, he was very happy with that buffer layer as a, as a filtering mechanism, but he also suggested that you could wreck part of it if you had a big blowdown.
Yeah.
So I think if you can include something along that, along those lines, I mean, you're doing this other maintenance work anyway, I mean, it is an extra cost to do that culling, but I think it would make sense, I'd like to see it in there, if you're willing to add that in.
So inspect for, for large trees with potential blowdown.
Right, to, you know, something about, you know, culling large trees that are in danger of blowdown, yeah.
You might want to do some very careful consideration of the variety of trees that you allow to grow in the area as you're culling. Might need a little advice on how to do that for the longest possible good working.
Yeah, I think the evergreens have the shallowest, well, I don't know what, and then you've got to match a balance, because you want the ones that do the best filtering, so I don't know.
Yeah, and keep the tough layer.
Yeah, I don't, so I don't know what the best, you know, what the best choices would be.
Good advice, that's all.
Yeah. Along those lines, I noted that, you know, you mentioned that the landscaping plan for that, there's a restrictive covenant on maintaining that section. If I read it correctly, that's actually part of the lease of the land to the company, is that where that restrictive covenant comes in?
That will run with the land, so it's going to be, it'll be recorded in the registry deeds, so it's, it's a restriction encumbrance on the land, so that this, this geometry, this buffer will always remain above.
So where, where is that in here?
So I think that, let me just check, we had, and maybe we didn't, oh yeah, it's right at the very end of your packet.
Okay.
It's called a forested buffer limited disturbance, and it's a, it's a boilerplate, and it has all the language, it's basically the restrictive covenant that would get recorded.
So what's section numbers?
So it would be section 12, the end of section 12, I believe. Right before the plan.
Oh, here it is.
Looks like this.
Yep, page, it also says page eight, right? Right after, it's right after the inspection log?
Yeah.
And, suggested templates. So this would have to be completed and signed, is that?
Right.
Okay.
It, it has to be completed and signed for the site law application, so we're covered there. This is, this is part of the site law application, this forested buffer restriction.
That's, that's going to the DEP for approval?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just noting that, though, I just want to. So, because you were, you were asking for a waiver for.
Well, for stormwater?
Well, no, for a landscaping plan, but.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I'm not sure that you don't have a landscaping plan, and that that's your plan.
You could interpret that way, I mean, I've, you know, usually you see like, you know, plantings here and there, but this is a developed site already, it's.
Yeah, right.
It's a well-kept, neat site, there's nice landscaping out of the road, and a sign, I mean, that's what I was getting at, more so.
Sure.
The road frontage.
Yeah, and I did add that.
Gotcha, okay, yeah.
We are, we are maintaining the trees in the buffer area, so.
Okay.
And in fact, that most of this development, this new development, is in the back, where you can't even see it, you know, it's in the, behind the buildings and everything.
Mm-hmm.
So as, in an abundance of caution, I asked for the waiver, but if you, if you see it fit, that this is.
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's fair to leave it in as a waiver, yeah, that's fine.
It's amazing how much water a full-grown maple tree will suck up, and back towards the power line, a few maples might really dry the place out quite considerably. Look great.
Norway maples eat the most water.
They're invasive, though.
And they're invasive, I know.
I know.
Yeah.
The wood even pastures.
Got one ginormous one right in my front yard, and I had no idea it was an invasive species, but.
Yeah.
Okay, what else we got here?
Yeah, any other?
That's really, there's any other waiver requests on your thing, Max, was the net developable acreage calculation, and yeah, and the stormwater management, which makes sense to have those be waivers.
Yeah, let me make sure I got those.
Let's get them formed.
So you can get, so, and some other, there's still time for other questions to come up, but what I've captured here, so the waiver, waivers we have is the map scale, the fire protection location, the site distances, the landscaping plan, the net acreage calculation, and stormwater management. And pending is pending, we would be approving pending DEP approval, adding a large tall tree cutting plan to the maintenance log.
Inspection and maintenance log.
And moving, moving the north border eight feet in from the boundary line.
The parking area.
The parking area.
Off the boundary by a minimum of eight feet.
Yeah.
I think to minimize our ordinance.
So that's all I've got so far. Are there any other?
Yep.
Questions or comments?
Sounds good.
So I would like to entertain a motion that we approve the northeast transport application with the following waivers, one, map scale, two, fire protection location, three, site distances, four, landscaping plan, five, net acreage calculation, six, stormwater management plan, pending DEP approval, addition to the maintenance log of a, of a tree cutting plan, and moving the, the parking area back eight feet from the north border.
Is that the north border?
No, that's the east border.
Is that the east border?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
From the side.
Okay, sorry about that. I got.
I'll read that all again.
I amend. So if we make that the east border, would, would someone make that motion?
I would make that motion as amended, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments, or, I would like to thank you, this was a very complete application, and we appreciate your pointing out the waivers and making a list of all the performance standards, whether they apply or not, it's very helpful.
Good.
Because we have to go through that anyway, so having it done was very helpful. So we have a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. You're good to go.
So on the planner amendment, can I just get that back to the planner, to Max, or does it have to come back before you?
I think you can just get that back, how do you, how would you?
Last time we had to, we had to re-sign, right?
No, if we just make brush, all we need is a statement, and we can attach it to it.
Thank you.
Okay, a statement to that effect of these waivers and changes, and so this signature, we could still sign?
Yeah.
Okay. And that is this one?
Yep.
You don't want to do it right on the plan?
We can just attach it to it.
Or I could.
The state could say, attach to original.
I could put C, C attached.
Be attached.
Yeah, okay.
As long as we have a, as long as it's connected to the.
Can we sign both of them, or just one of them?
I think just one of them. I think we just sign this one.
Yeah, I think it's just that one.
Yeah, just this one.
Did you need copies or sign it?
Thank you.
All the time attention, and I also want to thank Michael, and every good comment that's ever been said, it's much as possible for me, because I know trucks.
We're trying to make this work better.
Thank you.
Good deal.
It's all good, and we're glad to be here in Walden, where it works out in this place. People say you're in the middle of nowhere, I said, no, I'm, we're in the middle of everywhere.
Right, yeah, central to a lot, absolutely, absolutely.
We're an hour and a half from Bangor, an hour and a half from Portland, almost an hour and a half from Lewiston, Auburn, and Augusta, we're centrally located, so I reject that you're in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, yeah.
It's way too old of them.
That's right.
You know, all the times I've driven up and down Route One, I've never had, had seen a car, a truck come and go out of there. Is it like, is it like 5:00 in the morning that it all happens, or?
Yes, but a lot of the drivers go and they're gone for a week, so there's, there's some drivers that come and go throughout the day, but a lot of the drivers will leave, and they're gone out for a week at a time, so you don't see them very often.
I mean, what are the chances?
Well, I'm glad they're not inhibiting traffic, because it is a challenge in the summertime to get out.
Oh.
Yeah, unless you're going south.
Yeah.
So, but we, we talk about that, you know, any issues that are brought up, if a recurring issue or concern, it gets brought up in safety meetings, and we talk to drivers about it, and let them give their feedback as well, because they're the ones that are doing the job, so, you know, we open it up and take comments like that. Getting out onto Route One, yes, that's the first challenge of your trip, but it's a challenge the whole time.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
We're all set? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
You were reading a list of six items, and I would love to be able to copy that list.
Oh, boy.
Sure. Wait a minute, let me, let me just.
I would let me photocopy it if that.
No, let me just take, take a moment here, okay?
I couldn't write fast enough to get it all down.
Is this like a work of art? It's like a beautiful bind writing.
You have a broad, you have a broad interpretation of art, then, which is fine, so do I, but. Take me a second to do this.
I don't have the.
It's deleted on here.
It's no place else, so you can build right up to your lot line.
There was one on the way down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's been deleted. There's no pre-application?
Nope. Unless, yeah, nope, not here.
Wasn't there going to be another person pre-application?
Bless you.
Thanks.
There was potentially someone, but I have not heard anything ever since.
So Max, did we want to talk about your welcome to Waldeboro discussion?
Sure.
Agenda, let me just, while I'm finishing this, if you can, it'll take me a second.
I'm going to go to that over.
All right.
I'll see you tomorrow morning.
Okay. Bye, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All come again.
Please.
So how much fun did you have doing this?
Oh, tons. I don't know, I made this so long ago, except the flow chart.
The flow chart's great.
That will be a huge help, I should take you.
Oh, you're most welcome. I was going to say, I think we'll need a list of all those waivers.
You can make a copy?
Oh, no, 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 you, you're doing the one I asked you to do that.
Okay. Hey. So what do we got? I liked this last time, so did you make any, has this changed at all?
This should be more condensed.
Okay.
What's included inside is the matrix, the land use matrix.
Oh, yes.
Or at least the current one. If the land use committee ever actually happens, that one will be replaced when we update it.
Yep.
But in that, it's pretty much the same. It's been refined to be more of, if you're here, the main two focuses you'll have are Article three and Article seven slash 10. Those are the two main areas people will go to. I didn't, I took out the, mentioned the Board of Appeals and a lot of other very minor things, just to water it down to the bare essentials.
So I have a question.
Yep.
This.
Yep.
Is going to be included in another thing? The reason I'm asking is, it says, welcome to Waldenboro, if you need assistance, know that the municipal building, blah, blah, blah. But there's no, like, phone number there.
Yes, I noticed that.
And I thought maybe, is it going to be somewhere else or?
I can add a phone number.
The phone number's in the first paragraph.
It is? I'm sorry.
Oh, not in the flowchart.
Oh, I see, it is in the first paragraph, okay.
It wouldn't hurt to have it both places.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have it both places, just because it's the first thing you read and. I would put the whole address, telephone number, zip code, you know, the whole, the whole thing.
And I know this is really silly, but the only thing I'd probably call out here is because if you need assistance, that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so maybe just drop down homeowners, what zone are you in? So like specifically call them out because your town office is going to offer a bunch of different assistance. And you're just kind of generically stating welcome to Waldenboro.
Well, is this going to have a title?
Well, that's exactly where I was going. It seems to me this should say like land use introduction or something. Introduction to Waldenboro's land use ordinance for business owners or something that's saying what this is. Because it's, it's sort of what you're, because you're.
New business in Waldenboro.
This is about like, because if you go to the.
Business, there's a little bit here that's not necessarily business.
That's true.
That's why I want to step away from saying homeowners, because some people will buy property that they're not going to live on.
True.
So.
Property.
Well, but then the first paragraph of the next page says this is a, this is a shortened and broad version of the town.
Land use ordinance for new.
For new business owners.
So new owners.
So we just have a consistent.
Well, new property, new property owners, right?
New property.
But, but you could give this to someone who's lived here a long time, who's just thinking of starting a business as well. So, so this is.
Does a homeowner need this unless they're doing other than being? They don't need it, so other than if they're going to build something.
Well, if somebody has a building permit and stuff.
Yeah, but you know, they know they need to build something.
No, they don't.
But is, but it seems like this should be a.
Well.
This should be a business oriented thing. I mean, I thought that was the point.
In order to survive in Maine, a lot of people need the option of having small home businesses. And we definitely want to make sure they head in the right direction.
Yep.
It's, it still could apply to residents because of the shoreline zone.
Right, on Article 10.
Because if you're in a stream, because if you're going to build in a stream protection area or stream protection zone or a resource protection zone, you'll need planning board approval.
Yep.
Whereas if you did that in any other place, it would be a CEO.
Okay.
And then. Then, yeah.
So if, if the title of this, so let's, let's chew on this one. What if this was brief summary of Waldenboro's land use ordinance?
Fair start.
I mean, then, then you, then somebody knows what this is, you know, because it's not a welcome packet. It's, it's, that's, it's defining what this is and.
Summary of land use ordinance?
What about zoning ordinance use? Because when you say land use, some people might think, well, I'm just, I'm not.
Oh, sure.
I'm not going to forest, I'm not going to cut trees, I'm not going to raise, you know, cows. I mean, does, the zoning has to do with, can be all kinds of size properties and what you can do on it, right?
Still, land, I mean, zoning is a subset of land use ordinance.
Well, I'm just wondering, most people. Most people will associate that word before they get land use.
Right, land use is a little esoteric.
Waldenboro's.
How about shortened zoning, shortened zoning ordinance guide? Or something along those lines.
Shortened zoning, condensed?
Shortened, condensed, something, something to say.
Introduction?
Well, I had brief summary of Waldenboro zoning ordinance.
Because put the two together.
Yeah, no.
You see there's a difference.
Very brief summary of.
Which would you prefer? Well.
I think it can say Waldenboro zoning ordinance, right? Is that fair?
I, I remember asking somebody if we had, long, many years ago, if we had zoning in Waldenboro. And they were very emphatic that we did not have zoning. We had something districts, so is there another term for?
A land use district?
For zoning that would be more pertinent to our thing?
Other than districts?
I mean.
I call that a serious cultural difference in, it's easy to get hung up in how you interpret.
Semantics.
Yes, exactly.
Well, well, yeah, I'm asking that as a question.
Land use districts, because I think in the, in the ordinance, it's defined as land use districts, right? That's the same thing as zoning, isn't it? I don't know.
I don't, I don't know, I'm kind of asking, but land use districts sounds perfectly fine.
So like quick facts on zoning in districts in Waldenboro? I don't know, if I see quick, I'm like.
Quick, quick guide for.
We use both words interchangeably in our existing literature.
What, zoning and land use districts?
Quick guide to Waldenboro zones.
Well.
That's why I'm thinking like if we put zoning and districts, people might choose one or the other.
Quick glide, guide to Waldenboro land use.
I think it's still.
That sounds good. Quick guide to Waldenboro land use.
Then you don't have the.
Then you have, don't, yeah, you don't even include it. I like that.
Thank you.
So that's replacing welcome to Waldenboro.
Does it come up in a Google search?
No, it can go above as the, it's, it's, it can go above the box as a big, big letter title.
Quick guide to Waldenboro land use, are we agreed on that?
Quick guide to Waldenboro land use. I like that. And that says what this is.
Yep.
And this in itself is, is really helpful summary, I think. And it is a lot shorter.
Still on page one.
Yeah.
It's a pedantic point, I apologize. It isn't the municipal building that answers your questions, it's the staff. Do you want to say the planning staff or do you just want to say the staff?
Know that the staff.
Friendly staff.
At the municipal building.
Don't require them to be friendly every day, it's okay.
And if staff is.
Mostly are.
The staff is available, is that correct English to answer your questions?
I think it can be is or are depending on how you're referencing them.
And we're going to give the zip code and the phone number here on page one as.
Is the zip code necessary?
Well, the address should be on page one.
That the mailing address should be a part or could well be a part.
All right, include.
Do you want to? Where it says contact Waldenboro's Town Planner or Code Enforcement Officer? Do you want to put like email addresses after that or the phone number and the extension? Do you have extensions here?
No, but that's, but with the, with, once you add the phone number, people will either call and then Mel will.
Right.
Say, who are you looking for and it'll go to us, or the person will just come in and be told at the front desk, go back there. I don't think, I don't.
Well, just something else that you might have to re-edit later if it changes, that if you don't have it. Because even if I'm, like, if I'm calling Stan, I just, I just call the main number and ask for Stan. You know, like, I don't, you know.
Well, and that's why I left it to the broad terms, Town Planner, Code Enforcement Officer.
I think it's better to be less.
Just to leave it like this?
Yeah, because then if, if the person changes or their phone changes, you don't have to change this document. It's, this document is permanent.
What did you decide?
Right now, it's just, it's waldenborplanner@whatever.com.
Which, by the way, is still Emily if you go to the website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't bother myself to change that. I honestly couldn't bother.
Did you decide that you want to say you're new property owners colon or homeowners colon, what zone are you in? Did you decide to put either of those salutations at the top of that box?
What zone?
That was suggested.
I, so the box, I.
We don't need it if we're going to actually title this probably.
Okay.
That, that was my only thought is that if you start off with, if you need assistance and, and that comes from far too many years, I'm looking at the camera. Doing like social service type work.
Okay.
Then I suggest zones should not be capitalized. Where it is first referred to, because it isn't capitalized when it's next referred to. And we decided not to add the email address, so I can cross that note out.
I think so.
Okay. And on the next page where it says welcome to Waldenboro, again, you're going to say staff at the municipal building. And we've decided we're saying is available, okay? In line four under two, location, do you want the word permissible or did you mean permissible? A permissible activity is one that you can get a permit for apparently.
Yeah, I think that was what we were going.
Is that the correct word that you want to use there?
Yeah.
Permittable.
That you can get a permit for?
Or that if you can get, if you already have permission without having to get a permit, that, isn't that what you're trying to convey? The ordinance details, some activities are already, already okay, right? Don't need to talk to anybody about.
Because building, you will need a permit regardless.
Right, but there are some. Following table from Article three, there are some activities in certain locations that are just yes, which means they are permissible but do not require a permit, right?
Unless they have to build something. In that case, they'll need a building permit.
Yes, but the point being that permissible is a subset of permissible.
So permissible.
It should just be permissible.
It should be permissible, okay.
Think so, but then it could. I hate to make it more complicated, but.
Well, do you want to say?
Because you could say type, type of permissible activities that can be done in the ten's, towns nine districts. You could put per en, some may require.
Permits?
A permit or planning board approval or something, is that necessary? I think this table is pretty clear, right?
Because it explains it further on, I think here.
Yeah. Okay.
It goes through all the yes, CEO, PBs and blanks.
Yeah, so that's fine, yeah.
So you're not saying some may require a permit?
No, no, just leave it as just permissible, yep, permissible.
Okay.
Yes.
These pages don't have page numbers, do they have page numbers?
The land use.
The tables don't have page numbers. Page one has a page number. Do you want page numbers? This says page three, seven.
Again, this was, that was included just as a placeholder for everyone to have a visual idea of what's happening. Once this actually goes somewhere, I'll make sure to change that.
Well, are you going to change it to page numbers?
I will.
Aren't you, aren't you going to tell me what you're going to change it to?
Well, I also like having those there so that people know where to look in the actual ordinance.
I don't mind them being there, I just want, I think there could be both a page number and this little three, seven, three, eight.
Right, I think the three, I would keep the three, seven and three, eight, but include them in your page at the bottom underneath. This would be, this would be one, two, this would be, for example, three, four.
Or without including the page numbers, it just goes one, two, and then three, three, three.
Oh, my God, hilarious.
I would just add a page, include those in your page.
And then we start it four over here.
So what have we decided? We're going to put page numbers or we're leaving that up in the air?
I am, I would suggest that Max add page numbers to each page, but keep the, keep the reference to the proper. I would keep those.
Would it be too much to watermark them, Max, do you think? Like land use ordinance across this so that people have that reference or no?
Would it make it hard to read?
Yeah, with the shading. I don't know.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So, and that way that that page number might make more sense.
Should it say site plan and subdivision review at the top of each of these tabular pages?
That is exactly how I pulled it from the land use ordinance.
Well, I'm not doubting why.
It's okay.
Why, how it got there, but.
Well, I think you want to make it, I think into what Tara's maybe, Tara's maybe getting at is I, we don't want anybody to think that this is the guiding document, because it's not. This is just a brief summary and a help to people to understand where they are. That's, that is the, that is the commanding document, so to speak. So we don't, you know, so the fact that these look like they were pulled right from there is good, because we want it to look like it came from there.
Which is why any, any notes that are on the matrix pages, I don't want to put as a top priority because once the land use committee has done it, that's probably some things that'll be addressed. And then I, it's easy to address those.
Yep.
Unless, because I don't think this is being rushed. We're not under some deadline to have this out by Christmas or anything.
No, excuse me.
That I'm aware of.
Two years, five years, how many years are up?
But I see no reason why you can't hand this out to people, come in and talk to you. Right?
It's not authorized, but that's okay.
But, I mean, there's, there's no reason not to use this right away, is there? Do we need some kind of?
We'll use it soon.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying.
I can certainly mention it, but if they're already talking to me, that's eh, pretty much.
They've gotten past that.
I suppose. I, I, I mean.
I, I think this.
Don't people, I mean, I'm assuming that people would come in and ask about, about a business and say if you're not there.
Oh, do they come in and ask for a friend or? I just have a question, I want to run something by you, like.
Yeah, that latter.
Yeah, okay, so then you could just, so they know later, so they don't have to commit. You'd have this out and you could just be like, well, hypothetically speaking.
Okay.
Well, it's something that you can give to somebody, oh, you're just chatting with them, you don't, they don't, you don't necessarily. You don't, they don't, you don't necessarily, or they don't want to look all through the ordinance. You have something you can give them correctly, correct?
I suppose. I'd rather have them go through this whole thing.
Right, but some people wade into things slowly and if, you know.
I know, I know.
The other thing I was thinking is, I know it says so on the, in the beginning. Paragraph, so the contents of this document provide a general direction for this process, but specific details, you can go to the land use ordinance. I wonder if we should say something like that again.
In the back.
Yeah, because, I'm just imagining here, but if somebody comes in and they get this, I doubt that very many people will go to the big book and start reading. I mean, unless they really have a specific question and they really want to. I just, I have a feeling that people will get this and think it's all they need to know.
Yeah, at the end, you definitely want to send them back to that. I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Pardon? To the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where, where would this go, Sarah? Where is the first reference and where is the end reference?
The first reference is on page one, welcome to Waldaburrow.
Yeah.
And.
I see the land use ordinance, yes.
Maybe it should go back in as a little bit of a wrap-up.
At the end of documents even, you could have section six. You could just, you could have us add a section six at the end and just.
A summary.
Say, you know, this document has been provided as a, as a.
Guide.
Simple guide to the land use ordinance, but is not the legal, please, you know, or some, something to send people back to the actual land use ordinance.
And also maybe reiterate that the office is here for any questions or help.
Can I give my honest feedback on that? I like the idea of doing a wrap-up, but can we shorten some of this? Because after the charts, I basically stopped reading as soon as I saw a bunch of blocks. So, and I read a lot, so.
That's.
So if we're going to put a wrap-up or any type of legal disclaimer, it should be in the front or this document again needs to be a little bit shorter. And I know you've taken out so much of it already, but especially the big blocks of text. It's like, oh, no.
I think it's a good idea to have the warning about what might be involved going in front of the planning board, like what's needed.
I was actually.
Because I don't see that anywhere else.
I was actually gonna say on the part of shortening stuff, this is supposed to be the sort of quick guide and I suppose Tara's right that once I, the whole point is supposed to be pointing people in the right direction and then nature can take its course there, because when Julie was doing this, she said, people don't want to read, they want you to talk to a person. Obviously, obviously that person is me right now.
But not everybody.
Are you telling me you don't want to talk to me anytime, Scott?
I am. I'd love to talk to you, but I'm just saying.
Well, apparently not now, so I'm very hurt.
No, I'm fine. I'm just saying that not everybody, not everybody is that way.
I really like this amount of information, because if it was me, I would want to know like what to expect and how many ducks I need to get in order and so on. I don't know. I mean, I know, I know what you mean, that people don't read much, but if, if they have a need for this, it seems like this isn't.
For more detail, please refer to the ordinance.
And I think, and I, and I'm saying that not as, not only as a person, and I don't know what background everyone comes from, but for me and like eight hours a day and email and 95-page reports, like I just need to get to the meat and the bones of the issue. I don't want all of this. And I know for the populations that I've dealt with over the years, there's no way that they would, you know, most would not read. They would want to talk to Max. I agree with Julie on that point. Or they wouldn't want the simplest piece of information to digest. And I think that's a very natural thing. I think there are a lot of people that like to read and want to fully understand before they go in so they can have a conversation and feel like they're on the same level with someone. My dad's a great example of that. He has recently befriended his town CEO. It's a very weird relationship.
Weird at all.
He's done what to the town CEO?
They are now friends. My dad read the entire land use ordinance and I'm not going to say what town. They actually waived his fee, I think. So, so I do, there's, there's some shades there. There's some spectrums. But I'm just saying for a lot of people, it's like if this is supposed to be your, your quick guide for the people that are coming in going, I just have a question. Okay, here's what hypothetically you'd do, but you're definitely going to want to check the ordinance.
But I could see this even being available at the real estate offices.
It's like a two-pager.
Yep, well, whatever it is, it's still pretty brief.
Yeah, it's pretty brief, because if somebody can't get through this, they gotta, they gotta, to actually come in with a site plan to start a business, they got some work to do.
So, can I get a suggestion for something to cut from this post-matrix area? Like just an example and then I can be through it, like something to keep.
You want me to work through it?
No, no, no. I'll work through it, but I mean, what are things that you're fine keeping and things that are so boring that it needs to be cut?
No, I like the chart. I think the chart is really helpful.
Well, no, after the matrix, because you said after the matrix, you stopped reading.
Um, I don't know that, well, schedule of dimensional requirements, that's probably great for most people.
Yeah, everyone actually asks about that part.
Fantastic.
Which part?
At the end of the matrix, there is a chart for dimensional requirements.
Oh, yes.
Everyone always asks about that.
Mm-hmm.
So you need to do big bold letters again. Remember, this is not the land use ordinance. And then I just, like, planning board. I like us, but I don't know that we need almost two-thirds of a page.
Well, I think, I think it's just you have the margins too big and the font is too big and the spacing is big. You can make this a little bit smaller.
Hmm, that's true.
I mean, the whole thing could be condensed just physically, because it doesn't need to be. The last, the last page is special, well, it's just because there's some small text. I think it just can be a little smaller.
And like an optional task that applicants may undergo is.
Is this pre-application?
And this is the planning board, the last paragraph, an optional task. It was just that the language is a little stiff, like a task you may undergo. Sounds like you're getting a procedure in a doctor's office.
Well, depending on how it went that night.
I mean, so there's some language that can be just cut, cut down a little bit.
So like.
I mean, I can actually cut that whole paragraph.
You could cut the first half of the paragraph too, because.
Oh, I cut the pre-applicant, yeah.
Applicants requiring planning board approval should contact the town planner, because at that point, you're going to tell them when they hit the deadline and probably answer some of the questions about the public hearing, so that doesn't need to be.
You're saying end after town planner and cut out the next one, two, three, four, five lines?
I mean, I'm just one person, so tell me if I'm wrong.
Page three?
Uh, page three, applicants requiring planning board approval. That would be where I'd start and then I'd just probably leave an optional task.
You'd probably do what?
Probably knock out an optional task, because I think once they contact Max for the planning board piece, they'll get all the information they need to know.
Right.
So, so after applicants requiring planning board approval should contact the town planner and discuss their proposed businesses or projects, I should say, then all, everything after that gets cut. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, I would keep maybe the next sentence.
I would just cut it at, at an optional.
An ended op, an optional.
That, an optional task, that paragraph can go.
So get rid of optional task and that's.
Because I think this other stuff is, that's, that's, again, telling people what to expect, that they maybe want to go look at Articles four and five in the land use ordinance to, you know, to prep a little. So just delete that paragraph, yeah.
Okay.
And I think if you make it a little bit more condensed font and spacing-wise, the whole thing can be, will have the appearance of being a little shorter.
In the second sentence of that page.
Yeah, here we are again.
Again, it's got to be applicants to agree with there.
Means an applicant.
This means that applicants wishing to meet must provide their application, because that's a plural and that's singular and they've got to agree.
Okay, this means applicants wishing to meet the planning board for approval, da, 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 da. Yep.
I would, I would include that. This means that applicants wishing to.
What if you made it a supplicant?
Well, did you go to the next page when it says you have to tell the town planner about your predicament? I love that. You must have created stories.
Your predicament, you're kidding. Poor Max. Tell me all your troubles.
Um.
He never thought it would mean people, people, a planning board wanting to have such fun with the English language.
But so like, I would almost take this next PB on page four. I would cut off the first two paragraphs entirely and just move, it is not guaranteed that the planning board will approve, and then move that to the next. Move that up to the PB again.
Reviewing the application?
Slap it all together. Unless you're trying to outline a process, but I think, I don't know.
But you would be doing that in person, wouldn't you, Max, to, to tell them they need 12 copies of everything and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, you probably have a separate list, a checklist with all the stuff you need if they're going in front of the planning board anyway, if they're at that stage.
So Tara, you want to start under planning board with it's not guaranteed that the planning board will approve the application tonight? It is reviewed rather than viewed, or did you mean viewed?
Reviewed.
Reviewed, sounds good.
And you're tabling the application, not the applicant?
Cut.
Well then.
So delete that, those first two paragraphs.
Yeah.
Well.
I feel like so much of that is going to be explained throughout the prop.
Right, but it could, the application is, but they may want to know, the person may want to know where it goes. You could say the application is given to the town planner, who has the responsibility of distributing it to the planning board members and scheduling review by the planning board. Scheduling the review and then you could.
Yeah, and I guess, I know, I understand what you're saying and, but I'm thinking, this is a document that's going to be for everybody, so if I'm just trying to put a shed on my house, I don't want to read through all that. Or if I haven't even gotten to planning board yet and I'm just looking to see if I need it, do I also need to know that I need to make 12 copies if I've still got to talk to Max? Like how, how far down the rabbit hole do I want to go?
Well, I'm agreeing to, you don't need to talk about the 12 copies, but the, the organization of the document is, you have not, you have, yes, it's allowed. You have CEO, you have planning board, you have not allowed. And then this document goes through that, the permitting process, and then it talks about the planning board. So I think it's still fair to say have the planning board there, part C, and just say that application is given to the town planner, has the responsibility of distributing it to the planning board members and scheduling a review by the planning board, period, end of story.
So you don't want the third paragraph? You don't want it is not guaranteed, that those last three lines you don't want either at the bottom of the page, Scott?
I don't think you need, I don't, I'm agreeing with Tara. I don't think you need all that stuff.
Okay.
There, but I, I think you still need that category as opposed to nothing. Because I think it makes sense to still say that.
Okay. A weird breed.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Because I think there's obvious, there is no guarantee that it's going to get approved and the timing and all that and the 12 copies, that is stuff that Max would, would talk to people about.
Have we talked about page three? Have I shot my mouth off about page three? That the applicants have to be plural. Did we, did we do that? All right.
Yep.
And have we changed businesses to projects in line seven?
Yep.
We did, okay. Well then, how about the new number six at the end? I think that was Scott's suggestion. This document has been provided as a quick guide to the land use ordinance. For more detail, please refer to the ordinance. Is that how we're ending this thing?
Yeah.
That sounds pretty good. I might add to the end of that, maybe in parent, we haven't, there's nothing in here that says that this, that the, that the ordinance itself is the legally, is the legal document. I don't know how we want to say that, but.
Well, ordinance means legal document, doesn't it?
I'd say that was understood.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't want to assume that.
It's a, it's a quick glide to the, guide to the ordinance, so the presumption is that you need to effectually look at the ordinance or refer to it.
Well, the last statement could just say you still need to comply with all main.
Statutes.
State, yes, statutes, thank you, statutes, rules and the municipal land use ordinance. And then you cover yourself.
All projects, all projects must comply with what you just said.
Unless otherwise, unless it's in Article 10 and then it's just.
Right, no, but that's, but, but then it's because you're including the ordinance at the end of that, you're saying that all projects must comply with the ordinance, not, because if there's any, often in legal documents, there, when there is a summary like this, it specifies that, that the summary is not a legally binding document. If it's just a summary, it's a guideline, that the legally binding document is that. So, but I think if we have a statement like that at the end, that's, that's, should be sufficient. Because you don't want, if, if that ever changes and this doesn't, and someone says, no, this, I read it here.
So you wanted to.
And that happens.
All projects must comply with state laws and the town of Waldaburrow land use ordinance?
Uh, yeah, state, state, applicable state law rule and Waldaburrow municipal ordinance. So we'll, we'll have some time to figure out what the correct wording is, but.
Does that replace for more detail, please refer to the ordinance, or are we having both sentences?
It's adding both.
I think both sentences.
Okay. Well, that's a lot of editing for this time of night. I congratulate you all.
Yeah, what is this, the Shoreland Ordinance?
This is much better than Shoreland Ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very nice work, Max.
On what a page.
We only get stuck on one sentence for like 15 minutes. What does that say?
Whatever page that is, activity shouldn't have.
Again, that's, that's the matrix. That, that's out of my control.
Oh, come on, you could lowercase the A.
That's literally the matrix. That will be edited when the land use committee happens. I will make a note of that.
I wish you would.
What, what are we, I guess, I don't.
I tell you, Barb, we're not selling the fund.
We don't know what page number it is, because we don't have page numbers on the document.
But does it say three seven or three eight, three ten?
And Max is saying he can't lowercase the A in activity in six, because that's the way it is in the land use.
Oh, in six, ah.
It is the matrix.
Consistency is the hobgoblin of little ones.
If it was a specific activity, couldn't it be capitalized?
It's the hobgoblin of little minds. I love that.
It could be a capital, it could be a capital activity.
Love it, Susan.
You know, okay. Well, this is terrific.
Whoever made the ordinance.
But, so, um, when this is finished, I'd certainly like a copy of it. And I, I think what Barbara was saying, that maybe even like real estate off, I mean, there's a, you know, I think we should find ways to use it, because it's, I think it'd be really helpful.
Many times have we met with people who came in having just bought property with unsuitable plans.
Yeah.
Is this going to be formatted into a brochure? Is that the?
Coincidentally, there is a brochure.
Yes, we have the brochure.
Yes, but that's more business.
What? I, I, I'm sorry, you lost me.
Yeah.
So the Economic Development Committee.
Right. I've seen that.
The booklet, this thing, was supposed to be done since 98, I think, when the comp plan was approved. And then recently, there was a desire to do a brochure to be like the preface to attract people in. And then this would just be the homework to slap them in the face. And, so.
So can this be formatted to be a slip-in into the existing brochure?
Or...
An add-on, if needed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mess up the brochure.
Yeah.
That thing is...
The brochure's done.
What's the brochure say? I mean, what's it about?
Is that the one you handed out, similar to the one we saw before?
No, but I do have the whole box, if you guys want to see them.
So, do they have your, um...
I'd like, I'd look at one.
They were done by Marsha.
Town office phone number, and then everybody's to call the town office.
Done by Marsha Resnick, and took so long to do it.
Yes.
That's, that can be viewed after the meeting.
And the purpose of it is sort of geared towards businesses, or just...
It's more geared towards businesses. However, there is that, why Waldeboro is a good community to be in type feel.
There is a quality of life factor that's involved in there, that's great.
You're using that line, okay.
Proper advertisement.
Nothing? Yep, it's an advertisement.
And so, these things are off, they're printed?
They're printed.
Okay.
They're printed, they're all in my office.
Is this the same thing we were talking about the other day?
I don't know. I would be surprised.
We'll find out.
Before we wrap up and totally move on, what, if the formatting allows, I wouldn't want you to, like, jam up your real estate here. But, is there any way to try to think about fitting, and I don't know if it's going to look wonky, but trying to get this on Waldeboro letterhead to legitimize it? And I don't know how anybody feels about that.
I don't even know what it looks like.
I think that would be nice.
With the schooner.
Oh, put the Waldeboro letterhead on it?
Just on the first page.
Sure, absolutely.
For the flowchart.
Is Marsha going to form that, format this?
I'm just thinking, like, if it shrinks down with the spacing.
Thank you for the vote of confidence, Sarah.
No, I didn't, I didn't, Max, I didn't mean it that way, Jesus. No, is this something that is going to just get printed off your computer, or is it going to get printed by, at a printers?
I don't know what the Economic Development Committee's going to do. Originally, they were supposed to do it.
Okay, yeah, I've, I'll go back to my, my original point when we first talked about this.
Yeah.
To me, this is, this is about the land use ordinance,
Yep.
and helping businesses coming in that are, that need to understand it.
Yep.
I don't, I don't, no offense to those on the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, you don't offend us in any ways.
I don't, I don't care, I, I don't really, to one extent, I don't care what they think about it, because they've, they've got their brochure. We, we need this to help people who are coming before the board, and to encourage, you know, businesses to check first, and, you know, rather than jumping ahead. So, I, I think that to act, to even, if we don't need to request cost for printing, but we can get the letterhead on there, and you can print it on your printer when you need some to hand out.
What I was considering...
That's what I would...
Yeah. I mean, you're going to be the one that's handing this out,
Yeah.
for the most part.
For the most part.
Except for if there's some of them get distributed to real estate office.
Well, and if somebody's, and if he's not here, that, that can be somewhere.
Is the brochure a trifold, or is it a folder?
Trifold. What I was considering was having this on the website underneath the, underneath the ordinance section, just a quick summary, because that seems like a natural place.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll have the one copy for me in the office, but already printed out, for, so that if I one day snap and can't handle people yelling at me for how I say, for my use of predicament, then, um, then the replacement will find this and have a, a quick guide. And I'll have the backup, maybe five copies, so that if I'm not here and someone wants to just take one, they can take it.
But, I still think it's good for, you said under the ordinance section of the website, but I still think it's something for, welcome to Waldeboro, welcome new business to Waldeboro. It should be available on that kind of, like, if we have one.
Can Jen, if Jen likes it and signs off on it, then we can get her buy-in to distribute it to the business association as well as some of the other places.
Oh, yeah, I was just outlining...
Get somebody else to use the ink.
Yeah, I, I was outlining just the minimum I'm going for, because I have no idea how, what anyone else wants to do for distribution.
Well, I'd like to see it as broad as possible for businesses and people coming in, because it's just, the more help, because again, as Barbara was saying, we've seen it, people have made financial investments before having an idea whether they have something that's going to be approvable or not. And, and we, we don't want that. The more we can, the more we can get ahead of that with information, I think the better off we are. So, that's my, my take on it. No, I think, but this is, it's a great job. It's been, it's very, very helpful. Like, it's, we've been talking about this for a long time, and...
I think it's useful, someone who wants to be on the planning board to even see this and say, "Okay, what do, what do we do on the planning board?" You know, it's like, here's little, in two paragraphs, you might get it.
I have stuff for new business, by the way, when we get there.
Okay.
Do you post adjournment?
Yeah. My back is killing me, so I'll be very happy to adjourn early. But, please don't make a motion yet, because Max was just suggesting new business. I do want to, so, I, as, under comments, so, are, are we finished on this then, for now? Are we...
Yep. It's going to be revised and sent to this group.
It will be revised and sent out, yep.
Excellent.
Great, thank you much.
And Max has new business, I hear?
Well...
Well, under comments from new planning, from planning board members, I guess, uh, can you, do you have anything upcoming that you know about for next month's meeting?
For December, I am aware of no projects right now.
Okay.
And I think the deadline is next Wednesday.
Okay.
So, if I hear nothing then, then you're all going to have a great Thanksgiving present.
Well, no, because we still need to, we have enough things on our plate that we, we have the, we have the setbacks that we still want to discuss, and, um, I think there were a few other things.
Doesn't Shoreland have to be addressed with, for a few months ahead of the vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to
Right.
make sure we are done by, I'd say, February.
Right, which means next month I'd like to put all the pieces we can, put the setback stuff to...
So, their consultant on the green buffer is, is the state guy that I was thinking about inviting, because he's really super, um, for some insights into that, um, into the whole manure and setback thing. Although he's, although he's not a state guy directly anymore, he's, he works independently, I don't, I don't think he's part of a department, and maybe he's agriculture, even though he's kind of forestry guy. But anyway, um, and I don't know what he's going to really say, it would be kind of a general edu, a gen, general, kind of a lesson on how water works through the landscape, which may or may not allow us to make any further decisions, but anyway. He's, he's super.
Can we get him for December meeting?
Uh, he doesn't want to come at night.
He doesn't want to do what?
Huh?
He doesn't want to come here?
Uh, he doesn't want to come at night. He would come anytime and meet during the daytime, but not in evening. Last time I talked to him, maybe it might be different. Would he come, like, later in the afternoon or mid-afternoon? Possibly, yeah. I don't know. I don't know if that would be easier for...
Well, this room generally isn't used during the day, so.
Uh-huh.
It depends on everyone here.
Yeah.
And if we're not doing a meeting or approving on anything, we don't need a quor.
So, if it's just informational, we can
Yeah.
ask him questions. I'm trying to, I got, I got from Julie, all of the water testing results for the Madomic River for the last couple of years. And my brief review of it, which is all I had time for, was that a brief review was not going to help me understand what the heck it all was. And also, I was having trouble, because it's a lot of fine print on my little laptop screen, so, and it's a lot to print out, so I'm trying to decide how I'm going to try to figure out, um, that information. So, I, then I also asked Julie for if I can contact the person that she got the data from, to see if I can get a picture. Because what I was curious about is what, what if any, if, have we had any issues related to setbacks as part of the problems that we've seen?
And are they doing the testing after big storm events? I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Right, so I'd like to understand that a little bit better, so I'm trying to do that. And we'll see, we'll see if I get anywhere in time, but, um, I'd be willing to, I mean, I'm retired, so it's easy for me, I can, I can meet with this guy and see.
Well, then I get in touch with him and see what his availability is, and then send out a, send out a couple of dates for people and see who could make something.
I mean, at least some of us could get some information. We can write up a summary for the people who can't make it.
It's early in the day or late in the day, then it's easier for me to work on.
It's late. Is four o'clock late?
Nope.
Okay. That's, I'm just going to see if he can do his four o'clock.
Sure, okay.
I just, well, it's late, later, and then the, I can't talk, apparently.
When it's dark out.
In that I can leave work and kind of work my schedule around it. If it was like a noon time meeting, then I can't juggle well.
Yep.
Okay.
I think late afternoon would be better for me, so I can, yep.
So, based on that, that's probably what will be talked about in December, then, the setbacks.
Okay. Well, let's shoot for that, so if it was, if we can get with this guy before then, that would be super. I know we get Thanksgiving in between, but...
I was kind of thinking it would end up being a January thing, because people get kind of crazy holidays.
Well, I'll jump on that, because while there is nothing for December, we will possibly be having American Unagi in for January.
Nice.
Having what?
Unagi.
Remember last month?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Eels elders.
Awesome.
Uh, that will probably take up the meeting, so I want to try and avoid having the setbacks and everything done in January.
Yep.
Now, how come every building in a business park, is it because there isn't a master plan for the business park? It has to come in from the planning board. I mean, you think the business park is all about big industrial buildings, so why do we have, you know, another...
Because there are, because how the land use district was drawn out, there are, the industrial area goes outside of the industrial park as well.
A lot of the details aren't filled out.
Yeah.
And we're, we're filling out more detail, that's all.
That, too. And there's just other sort of unique things to this. They're leasing part of the property instead of just...
Doing it on their own property?
Doing it a part of the whole environmental park. There are just other parts to it.
Okay.
So, that'll happen in January. I will try to have it sent to everyone earlier than what, the usual week, because...
It's going to be this thick?
Uh, who knows, there are, there are...
It's going to be two clips.
Maybe, maybe.
So excited.
Yeah, thanks for the clips.
Well, it's, I, it's just, I think it's, it's great to get completely new businesses coming to town.
Totally excited, yeah. Okay.
And then, the last thing I had was,
Yes.
we do have an applicant for planning board, like, sitting on here.
Yes.
I think you invited him to a meeting.
Okay, great, so he did come in and apply.
Yeah.
Excellent, okay.
So, we just immediately said, let the select board interview him, and now we're just waiting on them to move.
Okay, good.
Put his name in the minutes, or is it just...
Jim Russo.
Jim Russo?
Correct.
How do you spell Russo?
R-U-S-S-O.
This is somebody that lives near you?
He lives at, on Butter Point at the end of Dutch Neck. So, I just, I just met him casually at another person's house, and I'd learned enough about him that thought his background might be, because he was a, I, I'm not even going to get it all right, so I'll wait till he comes in. And, and he decided to come to a meeting and check it out, and decided to apply, so...
Well, thank you for your recruitment efforts, and thank you for inviting and taking on that task of inviting the D A C F vote on, so.
Could I have that guy's name, Barbara, for the minutes?
It's cold.
Or would you rather the minutes didn't give his name?
Well, I'd have to sit up and attack.
You can send it to me if that's easy. Or do my email address?
Oh, well, his name would be right in the, oh, okay, yeah, the soil guy.
And then, that's it for me, unless you want to hear a two-hour rendition of my favorite, but not just, no fun.
I think they want to end it, so they can go see this brochure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I need to peer the...
Yep, thank the magic words.
Yep.
I move, adjourn.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
All those in favor say aye?
We all seconded.
All opposed? Motion...